Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM, the 30th day of January, and we are convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The sitting officer is Joseph Frodrick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael Wonko, Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Madoff, Board Secretary; Mr. Thomas Figu, Jr., Acting School Business Administrator; Mr. Dennis Degnan, uh, Dr. Dennis Degnan, excuse me, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Mr. Mitchell Pescual, Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
Mr. President.
Trustee Casillas.
Here.
Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Finerty.
Present.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Velado.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
Here. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours giving the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda as provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. While the notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan. Before we start tonight, I'd like to ask everyone to give a moment of silence. We've lost two of our family here at the Board of Education, Kenny Katschka and Lisa Ann Miller, so if we could take a moment of silence, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Acting Business Administrator, Mr. Tom Figu.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to introduce the accounting firm of Bojolik &amp; Morrison, who are our internal orders. Tonight, we have Mr. Morrison and Mrs. Castello here to give a brief report on their findings, on our audit, and our CAFR report. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This has been a very different kind of audit season for every school district in the state of New Jersey. Normally, school audits must be filed with the State Department of Education by December 5th of the, uh, in the year that the school year ended. However, the Department of Education has extended the filing deadline based on the absence of data needed to complete the audit document that's required to be distributed by the Division of Pensions of the state of New Jersey. For the school year ending June 30th, 2018, a new accounting standard for public entities went into place, and what it requires is that the actuarially calculated cost of health benefits provided to retirees be disclosed in the audit document. Now, in New Jersey, school districts are not responsible for those costs. The state of New Jersey is solely responsible for the cost of retiree health benefits for school districts. That meant that in 2015, when this standard was adopted, the Division of Pensions and the, uh, State Health Benefits Fund knew that three years after that standard was adopted, they were going to have to produce data for us to put in your audits. Well, three years came and went, three years and six months came and went, and we still didn't have the data. The data was actually released two weeks ago. The state has extended, the state extended the deadline to February 13th for the filing of the audits. We're in the process of putting those together now. Except yesterday, a new missive from the state of New Jersey came out indicating that there is additional data forthcoming and that we should cease preparation of these comprehensive annual financial reports pending the release of that new data, and then a new four-week deadline will kick in when they finally release that data. So, we've been finished our field work since sometime in the middle of November. We've had the historically complete CAFR document essentially ready for release by December 1st, and we've been waiting for the state of New Jersey ever since then. I wanted to make that clear to you so that you understand it's not the fault of the district, and it's not the fault of your poor auditor. It's the state of New Jersey holding up the release of data. If we had released the CAFR without that data in it, we would have had to modify our opinion on your financial statements because you would not be following the national accounting standards that you're required to follow. So, it was determined that we would hold all the reports so that we can issue clean reports. I'm also here tonight to tell you that, based on our audits, when we do release the reports, they will be clean opinions, which will essentially mean that, based on the work we've done, the audit indicated that the district is following the appropriate accounting standards, that the records presented to us for audit were materially complete and accurate, and that they represent a fair statement of your financial position. So, that was very positive. The process of the audit was very smooth, very clean. We got the complete cooperation of the entire staff, so for first-year engagement, it was a, uh, it was a very smooth process. We're very happy with that. The good news for the Board is, you actually had a good year budgetarily. Your fund balance is now slightly above 2% of your expenditures for the year, so you're, you're back in the black and positive. We're going to have to come back when we finally issue the CAFR because there are a couple of recommendations in the report. The recommendations deal with pretty much modernizing a couple of the processes that you follow in the conduct of your business. The district's employees are doing exactly what the Board's policies and procedures call for. While we were in the process of our audit, these policies and procedures were being updated. You're up, you're improving some of your systems to capture more data that we think is important, and essentially, when we come back, we think most of your corrective actions will have already been implemented, but we'll be back to review them with you when we finally issue the report. If there are any questions at this point in time, again, I apologize for not having a report to issue tonight, but we're at the mercy of the state.
Anybody have questions? Glad to hear we're in the block for a change.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Oh, yes, very, yes, and again, the only changes that you'll see when you get the
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
report from the June 30th Board Secretaries' report are a couple of adjustments to reflect
Yes.
Next up, we have a commendation that I'd like to read. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education wishes to reaffirm its commitment to provide every
additional state aid that was, the district was notified after they closed the books.
student with the skills to be college and career-ready in fine and performing arts
So, essentially, the records that you got for June 30th pretty much are what the audited
fields, whereas the Bayonne Board of Education encourages and supports its students to
financial statements look like, which is a compliment to the, to the business office.
Thank you, sir.
use the skills acquired to compete in fine and performing art competitions, whereas
Thank you.
Okay. I will continue with our agenda, starting with our approval of minutes, acceptance of the Bayonne Board of Education is aware that Amelia Micnovich is the national winner communications. I'd like to read into the record, there's an addition to the list. of the Eastern Division for the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Poster Contest for 2018, It is a resignation from Manuel Mangiano. Dear Mr. Copaz, please accept this letter as notice that I will be resigning from my whereas this Board of Education would like to commend Amelia from Nicholas Oresco School job here at the Bayonne Board of Education as a teacher aide effective January 25th, for being the national winner of the Eastern Division of the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Poster Contest, along with her art teacher, Melissa Marigrano, for bringing Do I have a motion? honor to themselves and the Bayonne School District in this art-based competition.
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second? And here is just a form we will remember.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion from Trustee Finerty. I have a second from Vice President Wilbeck. Amelia is here with us tonight. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonzo. Can she please come up? And this is by the committee in the hall.
Yes.
May her teacher presence be of welcome. Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty. I do have some cards from the audience on a particular resolution. I will read that resolution into the record since we have some questions. It's Resolution A1. Whereas this Board of Education is desirous of assigning a name to Midtown Community School Number 8, whereas in accordance with Board Policy 7250, the Board strives to honor the tradition and high ideals of this district and the community by recognizing the commitment and dedication of a resident of Bayonne. Whereas Sergeant William Shemlin was born in Bayonne in 1896. In 1917, he joined the Army during World War I. He was assigned as a rifleman in Company G, 47th Infantry Regiment, becoming part of the 4th Division, which was part of the American Expeditionary Forces in France. During the assigned Marine Offensive, August 7th to the 9th, 1918, Sergeant Shemlin left the cover of his platoon trench, repeatedly exposing himself to heavy machiner, machine gun fire to rescue the wounded. After officers had become casualties, Shemlin took command of the platoon until he himself was wounded. He was, he received the Distinguished Service Cross and the Purple Heart for his actions, whereas Sergeant William Shemlin received the Medal of Honor posthumously on June 2nd, 2015, from President Barack Obama, resolved effective July 1st, 2019. Midtown Community School Number 8 will be named the William Shemlin Midtown Community School Number 8. And I do have some cards, and I will ask, we remind our speakers that it is three minutes. First up, I have the honor, our Councilman, Mr. Juan Perez, 862 Avenue C. It is Councilman Perez's letter that was given to the Board that first brought up the idea of honoring this World War I hero.
I'm walking wounded today.
What, how, you're out dancing again?
Close. I'm 39-years-old, so you know I can dance. I'm here to advocate for Sergeant William Shemlin and for the name change for our school in Midtown. As you read, Sergeant Shemlin was an outstanding soldier, a veteran of the First World War, and if you remember, on the 11th day, 11th month of the 11th hour, 1918, the Amishes were signed for horrific war, and if you ever see these movies where you see No Man's Land, that took a lot of courage. He's a young man who was born in Bayonne, raised in Bayonne, went into the military and distinguished himself. It's an honor and a privilege to, uh, to meet his family. I went to, uh, to the cemetery at Staten Island with Glenn Flora and his, um, and a group of veterans. They had a ceremony there for the Medal of Honor. I was very, uh, I was very humbled to be there and privileged to be standing by a man who I would consider a hero by his grave. It would be an honor to have that done here. As you can see, we have Oresco School, we have Greg Park after Medal of Honor winner. This would be an ideal. You have a, like a triangle here in Bayonne, and Bayonne is very unique. Not too many cities can brag, we have Medal of Honor winners. We have three, and I was advised by Glenn, there might be a fourth one coming up. Please, consider his name. It's, and it'll be an honor and a privilege for him and his family, while he's dead now, posthumously he received it, but it'll be an honor, and it's a veteran, and we must respect our veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Please consider.
Next up, Mr. Barry Dugan, 796 Avenue A.
Good evening. As a veteran and a former Director of Veterans Affairs for the County of Hudson, I generally applaud anything that's done for or on behalf of veterans. However, the naming of a, probably the largest school in the city of Bayonne, the newest school, in honor of William Shemlin, might sound appealing, and as the Councilman gave some justification that there are other facilities in Bayonne named after Congressional Medal of Honor recipients, he alluded to them as winners. There are no winners of the Congressional Medal of Honor. You know, I think other schools of Bayonne are named after educators, people who have really been involved in the community. Other than having been born in Bayonne, William Shemlin really lived in the Bronx, New York the majority of his life, raised his family there. He has little or no association with Bayonne. If born in Bayonne means that you can get a major, major school named in your honor, I don't know. That, that doesn't seem like much consideration and thought was given on the part of the, of the Board of Education in this decision to have it even considered. I ask that there be more input from the community. I'd like to ask that you table this resolution, publicize the fact that you want to do this, and hear from the community what their thoughts on this are. This individual has, as I said, other than being born in Bayonne, has little or no connection with Bayonne, has no attribute that would say his school should be named in his honor. This is a, a very prestigious honor to be named, have a school named in your honor. There are many other people in the city of Bayonne who've been closely associated with the Midtown Community School who should get consideration, and, you know, their names should be put forward, and I'd like to suggest one, and that's Dr. Patricia McGeehan, former superintendent, former principal, first principal of Midtown Community School, who spent 45 years in the service of this school district and is deserving of such an honor. Again, I'd like to ask you to table this and not move it forward. Thank you.
A comment? I guess the trustees are all aware from the packages that Dr. Degnan and I forwarded. Just a correction for the record. William was born in Bayonne, went to school in Bayonne, went into the service, came back to Bayonne, worked for the forestry department before he moved to Staten Island. So, I know the trustees are aware of that from their background information. I just wanted to correct that for the public. Next up, Ms. Veronica Pike, 575 Avenue A.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ronnie Pike. I am a proud retired teacher of 28 years' service to this district and the children of Bayonne. I had the privilege of being an assigned teacher at MCS Midtown when it opened in 1992. That is why I am here tonight. I'm asking or requesting the Board to postpone the vote on the name of MCS. I truly believe with my whole heart that William Shemlin was a brave soldier who earned the Medal of Honor, but I think more fitting place for him, maybe selecting to recognize him, would be Veterans Park or the Peninsula, which is known as the Military Ocean Terminal, or maybe a beautiful statue or monument for him. As a former MCS faculty member, I must tell you, we had wonderful and exciting and educational experiences, I guess. I was there from the opening for what we call the school, the dream school, or the school of the future, and worked under an incredible leader, Dr. Patricia McGeehan. She formed the vision of the school, along with supportive teachers. She had the support of parents, community members, and even students. She set high goals for the school. She had the school connected to the 21st century with the latest technology. We had a partnership at that time with Stevens Institute of Technology. The faculty was trained with our course to the district. She secured so many grants for Midtown. For all her work, the school was given the blue ribbon, was the first school in the county. I remember in 1992, she combined Robeson and Roosevelt School into Midtown. There were over 1,100 students. That was some challenge, but she did it without any glitches. I remember how impressed I was that she knew all the names of the students. She was always happy and energetic. She was highly respected by the teachers, the students, and parents. She brought us into the world of technology. She started the Dad's Club and many other groups. She had a group, uh, she had a great relationship with the PTO. She formed an active student counselor from 5th to 8th grade. Dr. McGeehan was the life and breath of that school. She was the first one there in the morning and the last one to leave. We used to say we should put a bed in the office there for her. I believe that MCS should be called the Dr. Patricia's L. McGeehan Midtown School. I beg you, I really beg you, seriously, to consider her and do the right thing. And by the way, I just want to say, the last time a, a school building was named in honor of a woman was 1865, and that was Mary J. Donahue, so that's the last time a woman was named after a school building.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Okay. Trustees, I have the curriculum agenda, Item A1 through A25. Unless you have any other directions for me, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So move.
And a second.
I will.
So, I have a motion, and I have a second on the curriculum agenda, Resolutions A1 through A25. Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
With respect to Mr. Shemlin, one of the things we're also accomplishing here is to right a historical wrong. In the packet, which Mr., I commend Mr. Perez, Councilman Perez, for bringing to us, it points out that he was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor in 2009, and it was given to him by President Barack Obama. He was denied the Congressional Medal of Honor because he was Jewish. It is, to me, more than appropriate that a school should be named after him for the lesson learned. Historical wrongs can be faced, addressed, and corrected. I would hope that when we put a plaque for him on that school, that will be mentioned. We're a diverse nation. We're struggling with it. We've struggled with it since our inception. It's time to keep moving forward, so yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And I'd just like to note, I read the resolution, and there is a correction. It was in 2015 with President Barack Obama. I would make that change.
You forgot Alonzo.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we started differently. Trustee Alonzo.
Well, I.
I apologize.
I, I love veterans, and everybody knows I love renaming things, so I'm going to have to vote yes.
But I will make that correction into the record and change the resolution with the correct date. My, my bid. Next up is our finance portion of our agenda, Resolutions D1 through B9. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So, I have a motion from Trustee Alonzo and a second from Trustee Ryan. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Then it's no on the whole agenda.
On, on, on finance?
It's no on the whole finance agenda.
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
I'm going to vote yes, and I just want to point out that the telecommunications bit, we were able to renegotiate that contract, and it came in about 11 and 1/2% less, so just that alone is going to save us between 5,000 and 6,000, so I believe that's a good start, so I vote yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And I'd just like to note, I read the resolution, and there is a correction. It was in 2015 with President Barack Obama. I would make that change.
You forgot Alonzo.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we started differently. Trustee Alonzo.
Well, I.
I apologize.
I, I love veterans, and everybody knows I love renaming things, so I'm going to have to vote yes.
But I will make that correction into the record and change the resolution with the correct date. My, my bid. Next up is our finance portion of our agenda, Resolutions D1 through B9. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And do I have a second?
I second.
So, I have a motion from Trustee Alonzo and a second from Trustee Ryan. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Then it's no on the whole agenda.
On, on, on finance?
It's no on the whole finance agenda.
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
I'm going to vote yes, and I just want to point out that the telecommunications bit, we were able to renegotiate that contract, and it came in about 11 and 1/2% less, so just that alone is going to save us between 5,000 and 6,000, so I believe that's a good start, so I vote yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up is our personnel packet, C1 through C21. Resolution C15 is being tabled.
What's that?
So, Resolution C1 through C21, C15 is being tabled. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And I have a motion from Trustee Finerty. I have a second from Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
I will turn to the non-consent portion of our meeting. I do not see any cards for any of those resolutions. Might correct anybody in the audience that filled one out? It's all for the open portion. I will start with Resolution D1. Whereas each month, the Superintendent shall report to the Board of Education all acts of harassment, intimidation, bullying, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 18A 17-46, which have occurred during the month, for the Board to review. Now, therefore, be it resolved. Now therefore be it resolved that Superintendent of Schools in accordance with NJSA 18A-17-46 reports all acts of harassment, intimidation, bullying that took place during December, January, that's 2018, 2019 for January, to the Board of Education, and the Board accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Building Administrator. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on Resolution D1. Trustee Munoz?
I respectfully abstain.
Okay. Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Trustee Alonso?
Yes.
Trustee Cassias?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
I will read into the record some additional resolutions, starting with Resolution D2. Be it hereby resolved that the attached collective negotiations agreement between the Board of Education and the City of Bayonne and the AFSCME Local 2251, representing the full and part-time food service workers employed by the district, covering the period retroactive to July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2020, be in the same are hereby approved and further resolved that the Board President and Secretary are hereby authorized to execute the said agreement in the name and on behalf of this Board. Be it further resolved that the acting School Business Administrator of this Board of Education is hereby authorized to take the necessary action to implement the terms of this agreement, the foregoing resolution is effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by President Broderick and a second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Trustee Alonso?
Yes.
Trustee Cassias?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Do I have that Resolution D4? The next one, D. All right, so I'll take a draft copy while I'm doing this.
I don't think we able to read it.
That's, well then, I'll move.
Can we do it real quick?
Yeah, sure.
I'll scroll.
So, D3. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative adjustments and reassignments to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore be it resolved that it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that the below-name personnel be reassigned to the position listed next to their name. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approves the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to reassign the personnel listed below on the effective dates indicated. Mr. Joseph Hayes, John M. Bailey School Teacher of the Handicap; two, 12-month Assistant Supervisor of Special Services. The new salary is $117,656. The effective date is February 1, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
Excellent. Me? Okay, I'll make that, I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by Trustee Cruden, and we have a second by Trustee Munoz on that motion. And second, let's see, Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Trustee Alonso?
No.
Trustee Cassias?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
I'm a parent of a special needs child, somebody who graduated from Bayonne High School. I attend CPAC meetings almost since the day I've come on this board. What I've found is a significant number of parents who are experiencing the same problems that my wife and I experienced with my daughter. Without getting into details, because that's unfair to both my daughter and to the parents that I spoke to, I've become convinced that it's time for a fresh set of eyes. We need new leadership, and that should be starting today, because that's who our leaders are gonna be picked from. There's only three, four people in that, in that department who are supervisors, and I believe we desperately need to bring somebody in from the outside to correct the problems that people are saying. We're not going to get better. They're not bad, but they're not great either. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no.
Vice President Wilbeck?
No.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Okay, we have one final resolution that will be in front of me in a few minutes. How about at this time? Well, but even before that, Arsh, our student representative, I'm gonna let Arsh Banerjee, our Bayonne High School, he's our representative to the Board. I'll let you make your presentation while I get myself ready. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, Dr. Degnan, and Mr. Fugu. My name is Arsh Banerjee. Yes. Sorry, is this better?
Yes.
My name is Arsh Banerjee, and as the Board of Ed representative for the Student Government, I hope to inform you of the events the Student Council has participated in and plans to host for the month of January. On January 9, the Student Council attended the Winter Awards Program for the New Jersey Association of Student Councils. At the program, the Student Council was recognized as an honored high school for Student Council for the 18th year consecutively. Our Student Council also received the Top 10 Award and was recognized as one of 10 schools to have an outstanding project in the state of New Jersey. At the meeting, the new state Student Council was also elected, and as you may remember from last meeting, Dylan Hedler was slated to run for treasurer, but I regret to inform that he did not win his election. Throughout the month, we only had one continuing, ongoing event, which was hot chocolate sales. Student Council is organizing hot chocolate sales every Friday to give students something enjoyable, and all hot profits raised from hot chocolate sales will be given to the Rotary Club. Again, thank you for all your continued support of the Student Government and your time today.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
There's a living organism that's always changing. There's a motion to take a short recess.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
And there's a second by Trustee Alonso. So I have a motion by President Broderick, I have a second by Trustee Alonso to take a short recess to go into closed session. Trustee Alonso?
Aye.
Trustee Cassias?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
It is 8:41, the Board will return. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to reconvene the public meeting. It is 8:58. I will take a roll call, make sure we didn't lose anybody. Trustee Alonso?
Present.
Trustee Cassias?
Here.
Trustee Cruden?
Here.
Trustee Finnerty?
Here.
Trustee Munoz?
Here.
Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Trustee Bellato?
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Here.
President Broderick?
Here.
Up before us is Resolution D4. I will read it into the record, and then I have two cards from the audience on the resolution that will call up to the microphone. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has determined it beneficial to retain the services of a third-party vendor to conduct the search for candidates for the position of Superintendent of Schools. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has considered the proposal of three separate third-party superintendent search companies, therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education hereby authorizes entering into a contract with Hazard, Young, Attia, and Associates for the purpose of conducting a search for candidates for the position of Superintendent of Schools for the amount not to exceed $39,900. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Before we vote on that, I do have two cards. I'll call up first. Melissa Godsky Rodriguez has a question on Resolution D4. Melissa, just remember, three minutes.
Hello, Melissa Godsky Rodriguez. So I had the opportunity to sit here during the workshop, and I did think that they presented very well and have some great services to offer. So my question is, during this process, I learned that at the end of the day, the Board of Education will have the final decision-making process on this. So I have some questions, and if you can, and I can answer, it's fine, just around what experience in hiring, recruiting, training, and probably a transition period does the Board of Education have in making this a successful decision-making process? And what history does the Board of Education have around hiring previous talent, including superintendents, BAs, and so forth? If you don't mind sharing that with the public, that'd be great. We just talk a lot about experience, though. I think it'd be fair to share that with the public.
Which is why we are hiring a company to guide us through that. As you know, from running for election, nobody was here the last time, you know, when they actually hired a superintendent, nobody was on this Board of Education, so it'd be a difficult thing to say we have experience in doing that.
Okay, that's kind of why I just want clarification, because it seems you make some decisions based on experience, so I just wanted clarification that there may be, I hope that you all can work together in making sure this is very successful, because as everybody in this room knows, having a successful superintendent will lead to successful students, successful teachers, and a successful district. So please just consider all those factors and maybe kind of take that self-time, the self-development to maybe be informed around the training and hiring and recruiting and transitional process. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Some of the board members had the experience of going through the hiring of the interim sort of thing.
Correct. We did have that.
The public, I said.
Okay. Sorry. We were here for the hiring of the interim, which I think was a very good decision, so maybe it does give us some good experience.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street, also a question on Resolution D4.
Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. Obviously, even back when I ran, not this past election, but before, it was always a hot topic about the superintendent search, and every time I've asked, it's always been that we're in the process, we're in the process, it started, national search, yada, yada, yada. Looking at the committee sheets, 2018, had nobody in the Superintendent Search Committee. Now, 2019, you got four people, and obviously, there's an ethic advisory issue because of the amount of conflict of interest on the Board. So 2018, having nobody on the committee, was that basically every answer I got for the Superintendent Search status, a lie? Or were we doing it, and the report of the committee list is inaccurate, which the Board is then providing false information? So which is it? Were we actually searching? Did we have a committee put together, and we were doing our due diligence, like I was told? Or are we starting it now, and now we're on, I believe one of them said, a short timeline, because you have until, I guess, April 1 to get that guy in, or girl, whoever it is, and now we're going to a third-party search, spending 40 grand, when we've had two years knowing that Dr. Wonko was only here on an interim basis? Which is why, two years ago, I kept bringing it up. And I know that everybody says we're doing a national search, but it's physically impossible to do a national search from January 30 and have somebody in place April 1. So which is it? Were we searching? Did we have a committee in place? Were we searching? Or did we not, as per the 2018 committee sheet that was broadcasted?
I will answer part of that question, Mr. President. I did receive an Oprah request on committee sheets, since the committees have been formed, and I will go back over that package, but I believe there was superintendent search. I could be, I will correct the record. I will go in and pull those out, and I'll have that package out to the Board, and we'll be able to find out for ourselves. But I'm almost sure we did have superintendent search on there.
Yes, we did.
The only thing that was listed underneath Superintendent Search Committee was the parentheses, unconflicted Board members.
And that's your answer.
But that's it. 2019.
It was any Board member that was not conflicted at the time. But as I said, I will go back to the Oprah request that I answered, and I'll get that documentation, I will share it with the Board members, so that they have the information for the question.
And then also, if we can get like a list of the unconflicted, because if you look at, obviously, the advisory committee requests that Trustee Munoz and Bellato, almost everybody is conflicted except for like four people. So out of nine people, we only have four people that could be on it.
If you give me the opportunity, when I go to do D4, you will see what trustees are conflicted and what trustees aren't conflicted, because the non-conflicted trustees can vote on it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on D4. I will let the audience know that Trustee Alonso, Trustee Cruden, Trustee Munoz, Trustee Bellato, and President Broderick are not conflicted, all right? And that's who I'll be calling it on. So we have a motion and a second, and on that motion and second, Trustee Alonso?
I don't really think that this company's gonna be able to do something so much more spectacular than our School Board Association, where it justifies spending an extra $38,000. So I'm gonna vote no.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Okay, we have some cards this evening. I'll ask you to come back to the microphone, Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue A.
Melissa Godsky Rodriguez. I do want to start this off on a positive note. Recently, my son had a great opportunity. He was given a great opportunity to be in the choir at Lincoln School. And with the work of the Child Study Team, his music teacher, his principal, his teachers, and his fellow students, he was able to successfully perform his first school concert. Having a child with as many special needs as my son, this was a great accomplishment. So I want to thank the Board of Education, because that was a pure team effort, and quite honestly, it had nothing to do with it. So I kind of want to thank everybody for that, and you should all be recognized, as well as the Child Study Team, for the effort. The second portion of that goes into the IEP that was amended and amended again to get all this to happen. Back in November, I addressed some concerns around the privacy of the IEP meetings at HIPAA. Has that been addressed? We're gonna, as parents, have that time in a confidential setting, where we can speak honestly and openly about our children and have successful IEP meetings, because the last time we spoke, they were being held in libraries with six to eight families at a time, not all teachers or therapists being able to attend, putting a lot of stress on the Child Study Team. So I just kind of want to know where we're at with that. I've been preparing for this IEP since last month, and it's not until April, so a lot of work goes into that.
Yes, Melissa Godsky, thank you for your question. We did bring it back to the committee in the central office and cabinet. We did speak with Kim DiMaggio, Director of Special Services. We understand space is an issue, but we thought we had a plan. We have large art boards that you probably see at art shows, and then we're gonna hopefully, well, we are going to set up cubicles and get the schedules for the annuals, so hopefully that will provide you the privacy that we will ship them out to the schools as we get this going.
I appreciate that. And just one thing, if you guys-
Let us know if that works, if that meets your standard.
Actually, that's what I kind of wanted to address, like if there is a parent that at some point maybe walks in there and doesn't feel comfortable, I just hope the Child Study Team Administrators kind of have an open mind, saying, wow, this parent does maybe need more privacy, it should be scheduled. need more privacy, it should be scheduled appropriately, and I think most case managers can manage the parents at this point.
And again, this was addressed with our principals, and they don't feel comfortable bringing their attention, and I will follow up at our next leadership meeting before the annuals commence.
Thank you.
Does that work for you?
It's gonna work for a lot of parents, and they're gonna be very grateful for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, if I could just add to that, that, uh, there's some statements made, you made some good ones, there's also some that aren't so good about that department. Um, and the board takes it very seriously, and we intend to look at, or I personally intend to look into it, uh, on a deeper, you know, just to see what's going on there. Uh, from what I hear, there's some very good things going on, but we can always be better. I intend to be at the, I think there's a CPAC IEP meeting on February sixth, and I think that, I intend to be there, I hope to find out some more information about what the parents think, and see what we can do about it, and at least get them answers, so some may be good, some may be bad, but let's get back to them, what their concerns.
Improvement and progress is, is a key thing here, so as long as we're addressing it and trying some new things, I'm telling, I, as a parent who does this every year, who takes six, seven months to prepare this IEP meeting every single year and for the rest of his life, these little things are gonna make a difference, and once we can perfect that process, everybody's job will be that much easier, and so will the child study team, they'll be much more effective as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Flood filled out a card, but I believe he left. Sorry, you don't see him? Uh, Peter Franco, one twenty-seven West Twelfth Street.
Peter Franco, one twenty-seven West Twelfth Street. I just got a couple of questions, um, for the board. Are board members allowed to undertake any employment or service in which they are financially compensated for by the Bayonne School District?
It'd be a turn.
Generally, no, but I don't know the circumstances of what you're referring to, so.
And, uh, are, are board members required to take any ethics classes?
We have to go to governance classes every year, different subjects.
And that's once a year?
Correct.
All right, and, uh, if someone served on this board for four years, they would have had at least, uh, been advised of the School Ethics Act, and what constitutes a violation at least on four different occasions, right?
Uh, it should, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Anthony D'Amico, seventy-three West Sixth.
I've said a name and everything again, since I said it before, or? Yeah. All right, Anthony D'Amico, seventy-three West Sixth Street. Um, Mr. Broderick, when the audit guy said, you said, "We're finally back in the black." Um, obviously, for anybody who doesn't know finance or anything, that's actually a good thing. So I'm very curious on back to the experience thing. Everybody, uh, made judgments last meeting based on quote-unquote "experience." Why we removed the chair of the Finance Committee when obviously we're finally back in black, which is a good thing, because we haven't been, but now we hand it over to somebody with no experience, in Trustee Alonso, when Trustee Munoz apparently did a great job, because you said we're finally back in black? So that's one thing. The other thing is, what's the procedure on email response time for board members? Because I sent an email on January fourth, again, January ninth, I still haven't got a response from the board president. Got a response from Dr. Wonko within a half an hour, and he's responsible for ten thousand students and thirteen schools.
Um, um, the first response, I thought my name was mentioned on the response, is that incorrect?
The only response that was mentioned was Dr. Mater talking about how there was no response coming, because when I asked, the original one on the third, about that current board meeting. Other than that, about the apology that should be issued to Trustee Munoz by Vice President Wilbeck for his uncalled-for and inappropriate comments attacking him in the public with a newspaper interview, I haven't heard any response to that. Haven't heard an apology either.
Well, if I get first, it's, you're, you addressed me with a subject that you wanted me to speak for somebody else on the board, I don't feel appropriate, I didn't really feel necessary to do that. Um, the, but, and, just in response, I, I, you know, going back to what happened on that night, I didn't think that, uh, in this, Joe Broderick's opinion, that, you know, Vice President Wilbeck meant it in any kind of derogatory way. Uh, I'll give you an example of why. Doc, uh, Mr. Wilbeck is married, taught for years, uh, had children, worked more than one job all the time. Uh, I myself did the same thing that, uh, Mr. Wilbeck did, always worked more than one job, raised children here, worked, uh, no different than, so if anything, we admire what Trustee Munoz is doing, not, not, we weren't, I don't think he was trying to make any derogatory, I think the whole thing was mentioned as it, he just mentioned it as a timeline, that I would have a pri-
The one, the one issue I have with that is, nobody nominated Trustee Munoz, so nobody knew that he was the other candidate. So he went deliberately out of his way to bring Trustee Munoz into that conversation, when Trustee Munoz, in my opinion, the most available trustee, goes, bends over backwards, the fact that he does have two jobs, have family to raise, but yet, he's answering calls anytime. I know, because I've called him at ten-thirty, because I had an issue with a speech thing with Henry Harris, he answered it, he picked up the phone, he called me back. He comes and is there for all school functions. So to me, I'm sorry, but as a board, as somebody who's supposed to be a higher-up, as a vice president, there's gotta be some sort of accountability for personally attacking a fellow board member with no, no need.
Allow me to address this, Mr. Broderick. Mr. D'Amico, there are three points of interest for the record. Mr. D'Amico ran for trustee for the Board of Education and lost. To show his dissatisfaction at the appointment of Mr. Ryan to the Board of Education, he took a hissy fit and was cursing in the back of this meeting room. On the same evening, Anthony D'Amico posted on the website, "Concerned public parents of Bayonne." He saw me handing out literature at Henry Harris School, which never happened. Mr. D'Amico stated, "Maybe I was seeing things." Anthony, you're not seeing things, this is called delusional, and can be treated medically. On the same parent portal, you claim I blasted Mr. Munoz for holding two full-time jobs, and for the record, that's commendable. Any person, male or female, holding two full-time jobs in support of his or her family is implorable. Yet Anthony D'Amico took those words, distorted the truth, twisted the facts to support his position. He then stated, "Mr. Munoz, who wants to be board president, can't do it because he's working," and took a picture to that effect. If the camera can zoom in on this, it shows Mr. D'Amico with the picture of Mr. Munoz indicating he would be at district activities, but can't be because he's working. You want an apology, Mr. D'Amico? You owe the parents, the families, and the professional staff to read your blog-
I don't have a blog.
-attend your, this forum, and sit on this day as an apology. You disgrace yourself, our families, our community, and our school district. You're vulgar, delusional, and a fabricator of the truth.
First of all, Facebook's not a blog, so maybe get with the times.
Excuse me, excuse me, we kind of passed that three-minute point.
But see, actually, I got hijacked after my time, because he decided to stop.
Well, because I stopped the clock when you got your answers, so.
But, wait, did my three minutes count his statement, which, one, he didn't even get my name right, so that's how much revenge you did.
Like I said, I stopped the clock when someone's answering, so it's not, you know, your three minutes was your three minutes, you're welcome to come back next meeting.
That's fine. Please correct my name and that-
Can I say something? Can I say something, please?
Sure. If Mr. Broderick, if the chair allows it.
No, I prefer it's mine, I don't want to share it.
Okay, so, just a second ago, Mr. Wilbeck held up a picture that he refuses to give me right now, because he doesn't want to share it, but just go on Facebook, it's there. Um, you know, i- it's a picture of two trustees holding up a picture of my head. I want to thank those trustees for actually doing that, because I thought it was actually kind of funny. It was actually adding some levity to a situation that a lot of people found upsetting, so did I. Um, Mr. D'Amico, I do appreciate and thank you for trying to, um, I guess, demand an apology, or ask for an apology, because it would have been the right thing to do. Vice President Wilbeck does not have to apologize to me, it's, it's completely okay, that's his feeling. Um, but I do thank you, and I do thank the members of the public who did support me, come out and say that, um, that they felt that that was wrong, but I do thank you for that. But I will address one thing. So it's gotten back to my attention that there's members of this board that were inquiring about Mr. D'Amico's status as a volunteer coach, or if he was certified, or if he was appointed, and on top of that, they actually did the same thing with the city of Bayonne, because Mr. D'Amico is actually a volunteer referee, uh, sorry, not referee, excuse me, I got confused there, a volunteer coach, um, at the city level. Um, I just want to say, if there's anyone on this board that has any axe to grind, or any questions, or if they're upset with me, I would appreciate the professionalism to take it out on me. Come speak to me, hold your axe and grind it with me. Don't go after a member of the public who does a lot for the children of Bayonne, just like you do. So if anyone here has an issue, I would expect you to address it to me, and not the parents of the Bayonne Public Schools. Thank you.
My final card is Mr. Alan DeAngelo, but seeing that he left, uh, I guess you don't have a question for us. At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I think there was a motion from Trustee Cruden, and a second from Trustee Velado. On that motion, a second, Trustee Alonso, Trustee Casillas-
Yes.
Trustee Cruden, Trustee Finnerty, Trustee Munoz-
Yes.
Trustee Ryan-
Yes.
Trustee Velado, Vice President Wilbeck, President Broderick. It is now nine-twenty, the board will not return.